Comments? Yes. Two separate minutes.
This is for workshop.
Okay.
Together.
Okay, so we can include one motion, we can include the work phase of events. I hear a motion. So, for second. Joe. Anybody say hi?
Hi.
Any comments? Okay. Thank you. Scott, we have a new step.
We do. Who would stand up for this? So, welcome, everybody. I have a privilege to introduce our new finance manager. Some of you are not familiar, but we had a departure in September. And, and we have hired Kim Sage, who will stand up as our new finance manager. She comes to us from Kansas Legislative Services, where she worked since 2019. Most recently, she was working as a committee assistant in Senate Judiciary for Senator Kathleen Warren. And she's also had other stints with residents and several other legislators too during that particular time. But she has a background as a state auditor and has done internal audits, grant closeouts, information system quality assurance. In her private sector experiences include general business accounting skills, payroll, accounts receivable, accounts payable, and as well as corporate tax filings. And so she has been busy learning quite a bit for, she's been handling our day-to-day operations since her hiring and is getting the hang of getting our bills paid in a timely way. So, we are very happy to have her. And I'll be introducing the agency budget to her here in the next couple of weeks, so she can kind of get that other aspect for her job needs. So, please welcome, join me, Kim Sage.
The next item is the, what we're doing to approve legislative proposals. We're going to work on retreat workshop. I'll let Scott go through this one. Start a discussion, and we can, I guess, move to approve on one of these to come up.
So, who's your partner? Just a question. Do we perform any audit function with regard to Senate Bill 123? I mean, I know we have a higher than a separate building company, if you will, and all of that. What sort of oversight and would it fall within the purging of our fiscal efforts? How does that work? Do we have any responsibility for oversight or quality of the Senate 123 for finances?
All of those funding, the funds that actually come through as far as Beacon Health Options paying, they actually come through our office, so we're actually seeing all of those monthly transactions. And that's something that the finance manager handles. And then obviously, we, that didn't work by rights well, so we know. If you go back and see who, in fact, Beacon does a pretty good job as far as itemizing those things. As far as a formal audit concern, I don't know if we've done it.
That helps.
But there are cross in place to be able to know, to know what's going on as far as the vendors.
Probably just community corrections point to that any financial supervisor supervises. They have to prove that bills do.
They used to do, they don't anymore, because that was one of the things that they were wanting to do to pop out of that process. But, but we are still, we're still handling, you know, even though all funds are passed through, of course, we are still getting that financial information from Beacon, so that we can, we can check on whether or not those individuals is.
Yeah, it was in my last year. Was it by, so what was it last year?
I have to go back and check. I'm not sure.
Okay, but.
Yes, roughly. Yes.
Yeah.
We've actually, I will say, from that standpoint, we picked up, and we obviously were down during COVID years and have basically picked up to about, oh, it's often almost around about six and a quarter, plus 325,000 that we're actually paying now.
No, it's, Scott, I just add two. I do know that Juan and I do internal auditing daily. We work with the treatment providers and ISOs, CSOs on a daily basis, all day long. But in addition to Beacon's funding, I still do the pre-sentencing billing. And, you know, Kim will also know about that as well. But I never pursue it, I would change it a bit. But I just want to let you know, we do audit policies, procedures, and make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. And so, that is.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The discussion, Scott, you proposed.
Yes, so what you have before you in your packets and those of you that are online will have received the PDF files. What we tried to do was, was kind of put them in three different buckets as far as the remaining proposals from the workshop. The first one is, were those proposals that had requests for information from, from the commission. The second were those that were tabled. You have the commission members, you know, propose to bring those off the table or onto the table. And then the final one is a new legislative proposal that, that BOC brought, has brought to us. So, starting with the request for information. The first one deals with the old House Bill 24 bill draft. And that actually is a, there's a cover sheet on it that has three questions. You can see that. If you recall, this particular legislation has to do with our probation consolidation and some of the items on probation that were discussed during, during the, during the workshop. And at that time, the commission agreed to adopt information that was, that was actually promulgated in the Reform Commission Subcommittee. And so, this is the additions and my thanks to the advisor's office, Natalie and Jason, for working on some of these for us. And they actually are available to us. So, if you have questions, please feel free to, to actually speak up. But this is, this was, these were three of the questions that Natalie actually had in addition to, to this particular draft as to how we want to go. And, you know, she can certainly draft it any way that we want to. But, but those are the three outstanding questions for this particular bill.
I have a question on the second recommendation. How you drafted the most changes to say to the supervisor, you know, in regimented court. And the court term name, the term reputation of that. But this seems to be asking when to require the court to authorize supervision of official record recognition. Natalie, can I see if I understand?
Yeah, and that's fine. I think that, you know, I think Natalie was just needing some guidance in terms of, of what direction we were going to go in there. And I know, Spence, are you on? I can do it. At one point in time, over to that maybe you had some thoughts.
Yeah, you know, when we, when we worked on this initially at the Criminal Justice Reform Commission, the intent was, and I know Shelley's there, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but our intent was to remove D. And that E1 of that bill would replace Section D for that question.
As far as the second, Spence? The second question?
I'm sorry, that was for the first question. To keep, remove, or make changes to subsection D. I, as far as the question number two, my opinion is that I, I think it, as the officers, supervision officers are the ones that are working with these individuals daily, that it wouldn't need to be authorized for officers or for the court to, the court wouldn't need to authorize supervision officers to make those recommendations. But the court could certainly not agree and not terminate people.
Does anybody have any other issues with that?
The way D is drafted, I mean, I. And legislators. You know, the court shall grant the discharge unless by clear and convincing evidence the denial would serve to, you know, would serve a safety interest. So, the court somehow, I don't, that wasn't part of the original, was it? I mean, that was, that's kind of an addition. In other words, it is fine, maybe the court doesn't have to grant the authority for the supervision officer to make a recommendation. But then, the way this is drafted, not only do they not grant authority to make a recommendation, but they better accept the recommendation unless, and what I'm thinking is, this was not such a popular part of the bill. Remember, we, originally, we had, every, every, that point, we didn't determine supervision. We could automatically have you and see if a person had compliance, and this would be a really great incentive. And that wasn't acceptable. Remember, and even the Reform Commission withdrew its support for that. But what about this last part? I, I.
It's existing law, I think.
Yeah, I think it was. Yeah, it is.
My recollection was during, when we did the CRI back in 2013 or 2014, this particular provision was added in to, to encourage this particular action to occur. At that time, the standard was by preponderance of the evidence. It was later amended, I think a year or two later, to clear the fencing. And then we discovered that, I think there was, and I, maybe Spence can jump in here again. There were issues as to the realities of this particular provision were that the individuals that were low risk and actually would, would fall into this provision. They weren't receiving, you know, there wasn't going to be much application to this particular thing just simply because you couldn't really, I, I'm not explaining it at all very well. But I, Spence, do you remember?
Yeah, so for people to go to community corrections, first of all, they've, they've got to be high risk or, or, you know, moderate now with, with females. And, and the reality of that is, is those individuals through that term of supervision aren't likely to go from high risk to low risk within that time period. So, this, this gives opportunities for those higher risk individuals that have gone to community corrections that have successfully done everything they need to on probation, made their, you know, met all the goals that the officers set, the court has set for them. This gives those people the opportunity and incentive as well to get everything completed so that they can be terminated. As the statute is currently written, they have to be low risk in order to qualify for that and have everything completed versus the way this, this new language is. It, it gives a little more leeway that as long as they've, you know, they might have missed one appointment and, but they can still be terminated, whereas with the language before, they couldn't have any, any violations at all to be eligible for termination.
Well, that, that explains to me sort of how this is working.
So, for simple sake, D is already existable.
Yes.
So, that's, that's not a change we're asking today. The only thing really, it was that E1, but then E1 through this two, there's, give that under option, another provision in this section. Does anybody have anything?
My opinion is that if there was a recommendation from somewhere to take away, take out. I think we take out some of these things for someone who has a low risk. Right now, under low risk, and given the application, less than three minutes of evidence that the denial was served in this case for him. But if you take out D, then low risk before and the same provisions everybody else.
My next is something.
I think if we keep D, it inflicts B, so that needs to be addressed. I think there is a standard, if we take out D though, which might be what Natalie is concerned about. There is a standard of, there's no clarity in the way, there's no preponderance, that's for me. There's also no longer any consideration of community safety interest, which if you are now going to all risk and not just low risk, which I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just curious if the reform Subcommittee looked at considering community safety interest in those determination factors. Because I think if that was included down there, you address the first, then maybe D could easily go away. But if we're not, then I think there's a couple of gaps that might trip up.
Spence, I think the provisions of D that we were mainly talked about striking were just the fact that it, it's not really utilized because it's the low risk 12 month. I mean, that's, it, it's not used because it's, it's not, it doesn't happen very often, if at all. So, the, we did talk a lot about the public safety aspects in there, in our discussions.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right, that, you know, community court services are primarily the only officers that are going to be recommending termination right now because of the low risk. And, and since we supervise medium as well, you know, it's not, there are a lot of people that don't have this. If you look at the benchmark set under number two, E2, you know, it, it gives the benchmarks that, that officer or that the defendants need to complete. So, this is really just helping incentivize probationers, you know. I, I don't know if any officer, we, you know, speaking as a, as an officer, we all take public safety, you know, extremely, you know, that, that's a high priority for everybody, right? And we're not going to terminate somebody or recommend termination if, if, if it seems like they haven't made efforts to complete their probation or still might be a safety risk. But, you know, the, the look is really just to incentivize the defendant. Another part of this is, you know, that at a 75%, this is when this can take place. Early on, the recommendation was to, to fashion giving adults the same incentives as juveniles, which is a seven, seven days for every 30-day credit. This, if you look at a 75% time period, that basically equates taking off a week of probation for every 30 days that a person's on probation for a year. That, that's how we got to that 75% mark. So, you know, there, there's still a long, a lot that, that individuals need to do before they can get off probation or be recommended, you know, by these benchmarks. So, I hope that clarifies.
Just a follow-up on that of mine, major. This changes it from a court services officer recommending discharge to a hearing being set. And so, anyone can petition and motion to have that. So, public safety concern isn't really there anymore if there's just a motion. And it's not even one of the considerations that the court is abhorring considering, considering. So, I guess I, I respect that court services officers and community corrections officers would keep that in mind, but it's no longer listed as something that the court should consider, which in my position and dealing with some of these, is something that I would like to reconsider.
But the term provision says, it's mandatory unless you make a fine. I think, it's existing by, it's court discretion. It's not some slightly different situation.
But if D's removed.
Right, but D only implies, on provisions of D, court shall grant discharge unless they find a reason. There's no ban, D, there's no mandatory discharge.
But it says more factors of what they must consider. And you can, believe me, and Judge Hill, I think, is on there, might say, or. I mean, we couldn't argue because they'd say, well, that's not a factor to be considered.
We can add, I mean, I, sorry, I wasn't quite called on, but just couldn't resist the sound. Yeah, I think we should add that, I mean, as a consideration for the court to add the community safety interest. I think would help with legislation.
Just what I'm saying. We have the last sentence of D, which we may take out. Does not have to make that additional provision of D, do that?
Except for, excuse me, but except for D also makes the presumption that they're going to get out. So, I guess that's why I asked.
You just got rid of D.
The last sentence of D makes it shall, so it's presume early release unless, I don't think you want the whole last sentence.
No, just.
Unless that's. Right. Yeah.
So, just add section E, maybe whether the denial is such a discharge or.
Would be court under two.
Under two.
Yeah. It would just be another line that has that consideration.
Is, Spence saying, are, Spence, are you saying that there are not any court service officers? That the D is so infrequently used by community corrections? Is it also infrequently applicable to someone under supervision by court services? In other words.
So, I, yeah, Shelley can probably talk to this as well, but, you know, for court service officers, you know, for, if you look at D, you've got to have over 12 months of supervision, right, to, to have that. So, most of those level offenses are higher, which, which a lot of times, that doesn't necessarily equate to risk. However, higher level offenses with probation periods do equate to probation periods being longer. So, first of all, the individual's got to have more than 12 months to even qualify for this. Then they have to be low risk. And if they go to community corrections, they're not going to be low risk unless they've made traumatic changes. And, and the research is going to tell you that that's not likely, that they're going to go from high to low within a 12-month period. So, Shelley might be able to talk to how frequently community corrections is able to use this currently.
I think I'm clear on how it affects community corrections, but what about court services?
Yeah. Oh, sure, we, we can, I would think court services are the majority of the individuals that currently are able to use this statute because of the low risk in the 12-month period.
Right, but are you saying there's all, I got the impression from your first round that there were very few people this would apply to. And what I, what I'm trying to ask is, doesn't, is there a population we're trying to cover with D? With, with D, or is there a population, okay, they're not in community services, but is there a population we're trying to cover? Is this still something that's really useful to have?
Like, do we need a provision for court services people?
It would be a way to do it.
I, the, the additional language, I think, would still cover, that, that covers all supervision levels, whether it's community corrections or court services. So, it, it would equal the playing field between both supervision entities.
But if you're talking low-risk offenders, would you maybe not want something where they have an easier time? Like subsection D allows them to do it at a 50% mark, right?
Right. And, and, you know, the last number three there, it also states that there's nothing that, that prohibits the court from terminating it anytime. This doesn't say that the, this officer has to do it, you know, if, if the officer, if it seems like they're doing fantastic, you know, they certainly could recommend it at 50, 50% mark. I don't think there's anything that's going to prohibit anybody from doing it before this. This is just simply setting more benchmarks.
I don't have statutes in front of me, but I'm looking at this and the language throughout the whole statute refers only to community corrections. Is there a separate statute that applies to court services? That's what I was thinking, looking at this.
Yeah, there's no, but, you know.
Because it, it seems problematic that all the language is only community correction.
Well, in the, in the first sentence, in the first page, probation or assignment to the corrections. So, I think that probation is in, is the court services piece.
Yeah, that, that phrase that we use there is how we refrain, how we refer to any of those types of probation in the statute. So, the intent there is to cover all, you know, either court services or community corrections supervision there.
My recollection on big B on the back. I think the reason that got inserted in there was some of the feedback received is not all courts allow their supervision officers, whether it's court services or community corrections, to make that recommendation to the court. And I, my memory could be incorrect, but Spence, do you remember that conversation at all? I think it was.
Vaguely.
A, so.
Yeah, vaguely. I, I think there are, there, there certainly could be some courts that, that don't allow it for it.
For my court, we don't need it in here, but I don't know.
And, you know, I do have one other question about this. And this is, this goes back a little bit more, not just the termination of probation, but just something to consider about the two-year or the, the double, the maximum probation period. I, and, and I'm certainly no attorney or, or judge, but it doesn't look like there's any provisions that would allow for if someone still has, say, they need to do more drug treatment or, or any other type of programming. I think, I, I wonder what the result of that is, is if, if someone's still doing treatment after a year probation or, or, you know, they're, they're in their 23rd month of a two-month or a two-year maximum probation term. What, what's the result of that? Doesn't, does an officer have to file a motion or revoke then? Or, or is there anything that we can allow? If programming still needs to be done to exceed that maximum period of two, twice the original period?
Would that be covered by subsection C8? Would that be a judicial finding of necessity?
I, in practice, we do that. If you have a drug treatment program for the last 18 months, 123, for example, most of them are not, they use it only two months. In practice, most of them get extended. Because even if they completed the primary drug treatment program, you have a 300 intervention or aftercare process, which you really have to do to make it successful, make it stay. And if you want a super, you have to make sure you're doing it, a lot of the people. So, I can say in practice, that's what's happening. I think it's awkward.
But this recommendation would limit your ability to do that, to go more than two, twice.
You know, you're right.
I never do that except for questions. You just have to send her a vote, or do you just let them off? I think that was Spence's.
Most, because most probations are fairly high-risk probations, they're probably 18, 19. In twelve, occasionally in twelve months. Uh, thirty, thirty six months. If you're not under thirty six months, maybe you should have some difference to begin with. Uh, because that's, unless of course you're competing that you have a chronic drug use, you probably shouldn't put it you just keep getting parent and run it that way. That's there are some people we espouse, I understand.
Is, does, and and again, forgive my ignorance, but does this, if if a, if someone were to have sconed probation for a year, does there need to be language at the that probation, that period told or it, you know, we stop our our probation period or um, you know, so they it's, you know, we're on probation twelve months. Um, they abscond for a year and they come back, you know, does does that allow for the probation to be extended after that? Or revoked and reinstated? I I just don't know.
I mean, we're assuming when they request it, I abscond, that kind of stops everybody that told them. Yeah.
That, yeah.
We, if you want to put it in prison, we're reinstated to a new new period of probation. If that's inspiration. Well, we kind of have some uh forward on this. So I'll hear from you. Jessica, no, you have a position of what we should do. You've got a pretty big role in this.
Well, it sounds like to me, we all agree that D should be removed except for I would recommend that we add whether discharge will serve community safety interest as subsection E two E.
And you're not transferring the burden, I mean, it's just
Correct.
I guess I'd just like to convince you for the D, it may be inappropriate, ineffective with regard to community corrections officers, but still in terms of what probation take away. Uh, eliminating that for discharge of us. You know, creating the others, so. I would say that in terms of having community correctional services program, this strike that section E and then maybe others just for having section E two.
So you're concerned about the fact that D actually kind of makes it, oh, some is clear, convincing evidence, otherwise makes it kind of mandatory discharge, but D makes it just a court finding that there's no mandatory.
And it would apply just to people in the correctional business, uh, sort of, uh, uh, success by the facts.
I sort of agree with that because it seems to me like D covers the really low risk court services people, and why shouldn't those people who are in compliance and doing everything they're supposed to be doing have a a presumption of discharge? As opposed to the people who are medium or higher risk that would go before the court and have the court examine all these things to determine whether that's a good idea. It still allows, you know, the court to reject it if there's a community safety interest, but it sort of offers a higher incentive to those lower risk offenders. Mr. Chair. And if that is the desire, then language needs to be added to E, otherwise you have directly conflicting subsections.
Of
That bar, that that court services could use, like, both of them theoretically apply and there would be it would be vague, so.
I agree there could be some confusion, and maybe if we add it to subsection E for those that are not low risk. And then and then we're long into subsection E, so then you could still apply it if you weren't one of those low risk offenders. So we'd also need D need to strike assignment to community correctional services program because right now it's only applying to corrections. Do you? Unless Natalie is that?
Well, so I guess my question to you would be like, right now, in order to get on to community corrections, you have to be moderate or high risk. But can you have been assigned to community corrections originally and now be low risk? Is that possible?
It is possible. But
So I think that would be the only scenario where you're going to have a community corrections person, um, you know. So we we could get rid of community corrections if you if you want to, you know, um, just have that apply to the court services folks.
So in your opinion, Natalie, does it apply to court services right now, the way it's worded D, subsection D?
Yeah, I thi- I think D would apply to anyone who's on any type of supervision, as long as they're low risk. And they originally had that that twelve month term. And it it sounds like from what you guys are saying that that's really not going to be that many people. Especially, it's not going to be that many people on community corrections. But I think if you originally were assigned community correction supervision and now you've just like made a total one eighty such that you're low risk, you've completed all your stuff, you've paid all your restitution. Um, then then I think that this would apply to you.
Okay.
Could you just change D to make it clear that it just applies to community, uh, court services probation low risk? And leave it in and then add the the E, uh, community safety interest in D, could you do that?
I I don't know that that really serves the purpose of treating low risk as low risk requirement of their placement. So for instance, I remember back in the day, I had maybe a low risk person assigned to court services, things happened. We made the next step, jump right to community corrections, they're still low risk. Now they're on community corrections.
And then they're not compliant with terms of probation because they can revoke to look up to ISB.
Okay.
So they were given a qualification.
I guess I would, if we're going to treat it as risk, we could keep going back to this, it's like in a lot of things we do. We're going to talk about risk and rewarding people and and dealing with risk. And we should just deal with risk regardless of where they're at, regardless of whether they're in community corrections or whether they're in court or and so anyone who's low risk in either of those two should get the same benefits. And then if they're not low risk, if they're moderate or high risk, then then this would be the subsection we would go into. As opposed to trying to say only people in court services who are low risk or only people in community corrections that are what, you know, whatever risk.
Does that mean we're going to litigate this?
That's already been done by the time you get to this point, though, you know.
Well, yeah, but would the best attorneys start litigating at sentencing earlier? But you know, I'm just wondering, it seems like, I mean, nobody questions the man, they just committed to it. It seems like without what you said, I would stop, there would be something.
I don't think so realistically. I guess in theory, in theory, you could right now.
Yeah.
But we could just make subsection D specific language saying low risk of, you know, the defendant who has a risk assessment of low risk and use similar language in subsection E except higher or moderate to high risk. And that would, I think, get rid of the confusion, so you would know that you get that higher or easier standard with your low risk and the the more discretionary standard if you are moderate to high.
So I'm kind of in general consensus to follow, just a minute suggestion, uh, low risk definition D marked high and he and the community safety interest in E. Want to send it back for, we have a great thanks.
We can, Natalie, does that make sense to you?
Sorry, I didn't hear exactly what Judge Fowler said.
Okay, so we want to make, just refer to paragraph D to just low risk people generally, not referring to community corrections or
Yeah.
People moderate to high risk.
So and so I can certainly do that. Here's my question back to you guys, though. And this is one of the struggles I had while I was drafting this. It sounds like you have judicial districts who do lots of different things. So like Judge Fowler in your district, you're using E one A, right? So you're setting a court date at fifty percent. And right now, the way this is drafted, in theory, when you're at that hearing, you're supposed to be, you're going to use these standards and two when determining whether to terminate someone's probation. But do you only want to be setting that fifty percent hearing for moderate and high risk offenders? Because E right now is what encapsulates both of those, like methods of discharging someone from probation or early. Now, obviously, paragraph three says you can do it at any time, when whenever you want. But if you're kind of using that method, I'd I wouldn't want to write something in there that, you know, if you're if you're using that for low risk offenders now, I wouldn't want to write that out of the bill.
I don't think you have to use that for low risk offenders. I think low risk offenders can really just petition at the fifty percent mark and the presumption is there. The judge could either terminate or set a hearing.
Perhaps what we do is we do always drivers, you give that here. Unless you're
Yes, but so uh the way I understood what you were asking me is if I could apply D to just low risk offenders and then E is for moderate and high risk.
So your concern is that there's no trigger. So if it, if the trigger should be revoked, then it probably should be their own subsection. And we're going to make D, E different risk levels, right Natalie, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I, well, and you could, so you could, if you want D to be low, like, that's that's very easy to do. I have no, you know, but when it comes to E, E has two options. Either the judge is setting a fifty percent hearing at the time of sentencing to come back or the supervision officer is making a recommendation. So like in Judge Fowler's district, I think he uses A, he uses the fifty percent hearing thing. Does he want to be limited to using that for only moderate and high risk offenders?
I think his answer would be no.
Right, so is it just maybe E one B that you want limited for moderate and high risk, the supervision officer recommendation? Because all of this is like optional, right? All of this is discretionary. In theory, a judicial district could kind of set it however they want to set it. Um, but the way it's drafted right now, those two are kind of in the same thing. I could also make those separate subsections. So D could be low risk offenders, exactly how it is right now. E could be, um, the court can set a hearing at the fifty percent hearing and that can apply to all offenders. And then I could have an F, that's the whole supervision officer recommendation thing, and that only applies to moderate and high risk offenders.
You, the the only issue I see is if you have someone on for twelve month probation and they're low risk, D does not apply because you're terminating them at at twelve months. And so those, the people that are low risk with a twelve month supervision period have no incentive to do anything.
Okay, thanks. I was reading that as being someone who's on a twelve month probation, not that they would have to be twelve months in before they could apply. And maybe I'm reading it incorrectly. It has one of the twelve months, I'm trying to figure out.
Well, they have to be compliant for a period of twelve months. Like, if if you take out that middle, you know.
So maybe that would need to be changed to six if we're intending to do the twelve month low risk probation, you know. It just needs to be adjusted.
Does that work, Natalie?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, if that's, yeah, if that's what you guys, you know, want for D, I can easily make that six months. And then I can um change it to, you know, be, I mean, you already have to be low risk, so. Um, and it sounds like you guys don't want it to only apply depending on which type of supervision you're on. So I think that's all that would have to be changed.
Mr. Chair. As opposed to changing it to specific months, can we change it to have been compliant for fifty percent?
Yes.
Because then we're capturing those that are on for eighteen months and not, we're capturing the twelve instead. We're not just putting everybody in a six month one. And that's the same kind of language you have Natalie down with the when they set that hearing is a fifty percent. Right, so maybe just do fifty percent as a six month.
So consensus on that, fifty percent, okay?
And then as to the third question, I do think there should be some language, Natalie, that there isn't a guarantee early termination.
Well, although, like, there's kind of a guarantee, if you're going to keep D for just the ones in E.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's included by it saying May.
Yeah. I mean, I'll clarify, if it does say May, if you're Okay, so let's do this, let's see if we can get a redraft, I think we need to have a hard copy of the tools to try to
Though, can I recap just to make sure I understand exactly what I'm supposed to do here? So I'm changing D, um, I'm keeping that it it's just for the low risk offenders. Um, keeping either probation or community services or community corrections in there. Changing it to that you've been compliant for at least fifty percent of your time. And then with E, I'm going to actually separate it into two different tracks. And so the court, the fifty percent hearing can be for any type of offender. The supervision officer recommendation is just for moderate and high risk offenders. Um, and then I'm going to keep that too. And that those factors under two will apply to just both the fifty percent hearing or the court services recommendation.
Okay, then you're going to add the community safety interest. Has he?
Then add the community safety interest.
Oh, right. As a factor, yes, okay, okay. Okay.
Okay. That was an easy one. Um, and for for everybody here in the room, we have had requests as far as people speak up because we have some folks, members online that are having a proper hearing. So if you would, um, that would be helpful. Okay, uh, the next one is, uh, should be right under that, pastill, um, twenty thirty one that was originally, um, interviews. Uh, this was the good time credit that we had lots of discussions on, uh, at the workshop. Um, we had, um, care discussions down to five percent. However, um, there was a request for information from DOC as to what kind of loss of credits were actually occurring in the facilities. And so, um, I called on, um, one of the, uh, top, uh, employees in KDOC, Randy Bowman, to, uh, to find that out for us. And so Randy is here with a potential report.
Well, that was a, uh, maybe not quite true introduction, but I think we just got, um. So I had a research pull some numbers here, basically, good time first. Uh, the average number of days of releases in this year twenty two was being out was two hundred and fifty five day. I had to look back a few years to see if that was, how that looked. The average was two sixty-nine. The low was two forty-six and the high was three oh five. So there's a fair amount of fluctuation in that figure. Looked also then, you know, min- minimum and maximum. So of course, there's people who get zip-o, not a thing. Um, but the top earner and discharger really varies a lot. And I think that makes sense that some here might have some very, very long-term people get out. For instance, the maximum earned by one individual was as low as thirty-six forty-four. And its highest, ten thousand, six hundred and fifty. Whoever that person was did decades in prison to get that much time. So just context and average, we're talking about the range, the sentence could be a few months to decades and average a little bit of the So two fifty-five, right? I'll let that digest and then when I want Scott to check her in. Any questions?
Wondering how that correlates to the percentage that they're actually earning as opposed to days? Because if we're wondering, you know, if you're eligible for twenty percent, what percent are you actually getting?
Yeah, and then when it's the different changes over the decades, they get really complex. It gets, what, thirty, forty years ago, you got a little over fifteen, twenty, yeah. I could close the question, I don't know if they could extract it, paint that picture or not.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I think that's where the discussion was, is I think the question was how many people are actually getting fifty percent? How many people are actually getting twenty percent, right? Wasn't that really the question? So I appreciate the days, but I don't know that that really address the question.
Wonder if we can take a snapshot of people released to two-month period and actually go back and calculate what percentage that, that's made a small amount.
So do you have any, any opportunity to be able to, like, for a, like, for a snapshot or, or a a, you know, last year, for example, or something like that, to be able to, to calculate what their credit, you know, based upon the, these very level of crowdfunding, plus how much good time credit they actually accrued or lost, I guess, is the, the big question. We don't need to have it just to have it. Yeah, I think that question, that, okay.
If you keep making this sample smaller and smaller, to figure out, to get one that's consistent with general practice. Take a hundred inmates who got out, the last, the last hundred that got out, I guess, and, and try to make that calculation from them and expectations from that, about how much, I'd actually use this ten percent. Or twenty percent plus program credit to consider what we're having there.
It's like we have another request for information. It's set aside. So we have, uh, um, moving on with the table proposals. Um, there are again two here. Um, one, just to refresh your recollection, was, uh, the, uh, this is the temporary, per treatment, uh, temporary custody hearing, uh, language. There was a question as to whether or not the KBI could do what we were actually wanting them to do in the, in the, in the bill. Uh, the other bill, uh, for your consideration, is the expansion of one twenty-three to non-recent, very well said. So I'll take the, the KBI one on first. I had an opportunity to, um, get in touch with, uh, the, uh, folks at KBI that deal with, of course, entering, uh, these items. What you have before you on the cover sheet of the, of the bill is a PowerPoint slide that they actually use for, um, training purposes, that actually give you a, a, an idea of what uh, the different sources are. And, uh, and so, uh, what I was advised, based upon the fact that this is a, uh, this is not a criminal proceeding, is that, uh, we would need to actually use the NICS indices, they're on the right column. That's the natural instant criminal background checks system that is normally used for firearm, uh, checks rather than NCIC. And so, uh, it appears, uh, when I asked, uh, about, I guess, have mental health communications and voluntary commitments, as well as state firearm provisions, that, uh, that would, uh, that would fit into that particular category, uh, if we utilized uh, language that, that, uh, referenced NICS. I was also informed, however, though, that specific language in the orders had to be required uh, for them to be able to do that. And I listed those in the bullet points, um, on that cover sheet. You know, most of those are going to be inherent in the proceedings themselves anyway, with being a danger to themselves or others. Um, and that, uh, since these folks are going to be going to swathe you most of the time, they are going to be subject to uh, treatment or, uh, So, so that should, that should cover the bases on it. Um, so the only, um, you know, my understanding after, after that discussion was that, uh, the only thing that we would need to change on there would be, um, instead of NCIC, just NICS, uh, would be in the, would be in the, uh, in the bill. Cause I think right now we have NCIC.
And on page three, line four. Do we have any, do we have anywhere that the court must make a, a finding?
Yeah, the court has to make it. Those two bottoms name yourself brothers and, and not doing that to kill themselves and somebody's, you have to make that fine. So, I mean, it does say, it doesn't make it a man order as far as we can.
No, I was just making sure that those findings were somewhere because the temporary were, and, and justice might have, they are in subsection D. So thank you for that.
So we have a motion, we have a second.
One second.
Any other discussion? All the favors say aye. Have any opposed? Looks like everybody really voted aye. Is anybody on Zoom, one of them, uh, against the proposal? Okay, looks like it's passed. Next time.
Okay, so the next, um, item that, um, was tabled uh, previously was, uh, and indicated the expansion of one twenty-three. Um, J C Thompson from the advisor's office, um, went back and what you see here is the, um, is a draft of what we had talked about, the, uh, and I think J C's on, yeah, there's some questions. The, um, part of the, the issue, of course, is as you, as you will notice, um, the expansion language has actually been amended into the current SB one twenty-three statute. Um, and so that was the decision to, uh, to include folks that were, you know, the, the normal possession of vendors, small sales, the type of folks, and then a subset, a new section, uh, starting on page two, uh, that dealt with those non-robbery offenders. Um, the only, um, you know, we kept everything general and usual, um, to, uh, allow for the commission to uh, make decisions regarding, uh, what those thresholds would be for eligibility, since that was a discussion piece. Um, part of the, the issue, and, and we can, we can do that right now with the statute as is. However, the commission is still, would still be required then to make a determination like it does on, um, set at the one twenty-three thresholds, as to what, what will get you into, um, treatment for those, uh, for those offenses. Um, so I talked with, um, and we, we've thrown around the issues as far as, well, let's look at the substance abuse domains of the L S C M I. Let's look at that, uh, domains of the, uh, ordinance as well. And, um, I reached out to Ashley Baumann, uh, who most of you recall is the author, one of the authors of the ordinance, to talk with her about, um, her thoughts about utilizing the, the warrant substance abuse domain. Um, she indicated that, based upon, um, that domain, there are actually two sections to it. Um, one is actually, um, past, and then the one is present behavior. And then, um, I think I'll just maybe read what, what she actually indicated. One asks about lifetime measures of substance abuse and the other asks about use in the most recent six months. Neither are perfect major. For example, some score high on the history scale, but may have been sober for years now. Others score low on the recent scale, but have been simply used because they've been in custody. Her recommendation was to, to use those particular scales as, um, screening items, but have additional questions, um, just to ensure, you know, as far as cutoffs and those type of things. Uh, and offered assistance if we wanted to actually look at that. So, um, that kind of led me to, to potentially throw out a recommendation of, of perhaps, um, we may not, this may not be ready for prime time at this point. Um, perhaps the, um, assessment selection committee be, um, pulled out of, uh, mob balls and, uh, to, to potentially look at, uh, what those, those thresholds are. Um, we don't obviously have to, um, you know, on the first day of the session, be introducing bills. So we do have time, uh, that we can actually spend, uh, in the next several weeks and do that. But that's, you know, that's just a suggestion that, um, but based upon what I was seeing, it would like, it might be a bit more in-depth as far as those thresholds than what we've originally talked about, of just saying, well, they have a majority of, of, of the, the domain, then, you know, they should be eligible for treatment. So that was, that was the findings.
Call fiscal note, when we introduce this bill last time. How, how many people do you think would go to one twenty-three at my cost to the state legislature?
I'd have to look, I'd have to look at that. Um, it was, um, several hundred thousand dollars, if I recall.
Yeah, it was a very modest amount. But I do think how will the money, who's going to be eligible for this, does relate to that. And I think the chances of getting this passed, and I do think it's very, one of our most important bills, is to reduce low-level crime, um, one of our most important efforts. I, I, yeah, just be, I was going to, we'll get the findings. But I think we had a fairly low amount.
Mr. Chair. I think Jessica Levini and I would both suggest that there is a high level of non-person, low-level felony offenders with a high substance abuse issue. Yeah. Um, theft, property damage, forgery.
Yeah.
Um, so I think fiscal note will be high. Um, but I think, from my perspective, it's a good investment on the front end to reduce those non-person, low-level felony offenses. Um, but fiscal note will be high. Even if we address the thresholds that God has just, which we need to, my guess is a majority of those offenses are tied to a drug or substance abuse issue.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's in the literature, I mean, that's fairly well documented. But, uh, you know, this got, this got nowhere in the legislature and, uh, and it had a fairly modest fiscal note flash by. So I think.
Because I think of some of the assessment stuff that we weren't really, weren't looking at to ease it, we were looking at something else. And so I think that's what we want to adjust, um, which I think will increase the fiscal.
Not how it's going, key to this legislation, if you tailor the funding to people who've been placed on probation. You know, the one twenty-three talks about, has about the man who retrieve it, and that's sort of, if you take, you're making a funding for treatment. And it's people that qualify for probation or have a presumption of probation or brand, and they're being thrown out on probation. And they have a terrible addiction problem. The number one treatment for somebody on probation who has addiction problem is drug treatment. And, and we're not giving it to them unless we provide some funding. There's some lottery of funding and there's some other things out there, but generally speaking, that's a big hole in our system. We need to give them treatment and, and, and I, I always tend to argue this. Let's target the people who've been placed on probation, make funds available. And some of the argument, well, you know, they should just get their sentence or they should be, you know, it didn't make any sense. And they're on, they're already on probation, we're not adding new people to the system. We disagree, this is, what you have to problem, treat, try. So, uh, in this service, add more costs to one twenty-three, there's no doubt about it. But value is probably a cost saving. It's coming down to it at the end, you know, somebody's not going to get robbed or, if they're robbed or stolen, or, you know, they're not going to be, you know, a lot of good things could happen, so.
We probably need testimony from your honor and, and some of the other judges, because I just don't think this, I mean, this is such an obvious thing for anybody who's into criminal justice reform or has looked at these issues. But somehow it just passes right through, most of the people in, in the legislature haven't had any experience. And I, I do think we have to really this time pump up the people who are best respected, the judges, attorney general's office, you know, et cetera.
I had a guy in drug court who last week told me, he was, he's, he came from a different county. So he's not, not one twenty-three, he had three, well, it's actually seventy months. They asked to re-attend in drug court. So he started on treatment, they told him to be a thousand dollars a month, that's what he ended up. And that's, he's, he's a drug addict, he can't, every penny he's got's going for drugs, number one, but, but, so finally, it was community crisis negotiations, that we finally got him down to a hundred dollars a month. But he had, they had no fun, and no fun, so he, he, he's, he's got seventy months in prison. He's got a severe drug addiction, and the treatment center says, well, it'll be a thousand dollars a month. So, I mean, and, and we were able to work out a discounted rate through a lot of arbitrage and negotiation. But he would, you know, he would, you, you had seventy, seventy months. He's going to prison if he had to get drug treatment, you know, he was ready to give up and just go through the stock, so it, it does save money. He still may go to prison, but he may not make it, but at least he's got a chance now. That's what we're talking about.
We have, back to your, to your question, when we ran this back in twenty-one, um, the, we had to run scenarios, we ran, um, of those level seven through tens. Ten percent would receive treatment, twenty percent, thirty percent. Um, those amounts were seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, uh, for the twenty percent, one point four million. And then for the thirty percent, two point two nine. Um, that would be additional funding for, for that.
And I think we, you know, we on the sentencing commission need to make sure that we've presented the picture so that they really understand how this is really wise expenditure for public safety for, you know, for a lot of reasons. But, and anyway, I do think, I think we have some obligation on the sentencing commission to help make sure that the presentation of the information helps people. So whether, even if it's a letter or whatever.
Well, I think, generally, sentencing is a pretty big, this is probably an idea we do need, our screening assessments, that's where spending on the right people, there's no doubt about that. You don't want to, you know, that's important to make sure that we spend our money on people needed, not just like.
Well, I like your idea of having it be limited to probation. I think the legislature might be a little bit responsive to that.
You know, you could, in the bill, you could say that this money would be available for those who placed on probation and not over 123 and have a limit on crime here. Then, they're not, the legislature not making, from a political standpoint, they're not making, they can't, people can't argue that when you let people out, you know, you're easy on crime. But these are people who the court has put on probation. Law wasn't changed there, it just allows for funding for those who are on probation, so that's.
Now, there could be a public safety reason, if we don't address there, there could be.
Well, I think it already is. I think because we have a kind of a case in the Senate of 123 statute, I think that actually we could, that would encompass that rather than, you know, there isn't anything else in here that I would think it wouldn't need us to believe, or me, somebody else to believe that it would be eligibility would be outside that provision realm. So I don't know. Jason, I know is on, did you have any other part, or Jason, about any of the other provisions? And we'll put you on the spot.
This is Jason. No, I think I was just giving you the updated draft and was curious what you might want to add about criteria in that subsection, but I think that was all I had.
Thank you. Okay, so.
As the chair of this selection assessment committee, I'm up, I guess, for recalling the troops to look at those criteria if that would exist. Jessica Ledden just pointed out that we have these level sevens, eights, and nines. We've included some criminal history score A's and B's. And I think that might be one way to address this, maybe we take those out. So we're looking at presumptive probation cases for sevens, eights, and nines. And then we look at the assessment.
Just put in the bill, this, this is not change the presumptions. Because if they have an A or B, it's the parties. And then we, I think we want to make a better.
I think it's set up to mimic like the A and B boxes in the level five drug charges, which would be, I'm thinking that maybe it just needs some of those limits as to the priors, you know, like it does if you can't have a level one person felony on your record. I don't see that same limit in here. But maybe if you tailored that subsection to mimic the section that talks about Senate bill for the level fives, that maybe that would, that's a good point, get rid of some of that concern. That it's basically, you know, you could be in an A box and have criminal threats on your record. You're not a huge public safety risk, there's a drug problem, we still want to address that drug problem. But if you put the same language and mirrored what was in for the level fives, that might make it more palatable. Jason, did you hear that?
Yeah, this is Jason again. I did, and from my perspective, the language should mirror one and two, or mirror, they're just the different grids, different levels, but all the same criteria should be echoed there. About your criminal history, prior offenses, I think I copied it all in.
We can take a look at that, we can get the assessment committee together to look at the thresholds for the criteria or that.
Do that.
Two down, one to go. So the next is a new legislative proposal. Secretary Zimura, as well as Jessica Ledden, had approached the commission with a, with a proposal regarding post-release supervision. And you have actually the bill that was introduced by KDOC supplemental note on that House Bill 2603, as well as a unpublished case that deals with the jail credit issue. And they were wanting to talk about that today. And Jessica has agreed to maybe bring us up to date on some of the finer points of that.
Thank you, Scott. So this is an issue that KDOC is clearly aware of, and they ran this bill in '18. It passed the House, and then it got caught up in the Senate and didn't go anywhere. It's an issue that prosecutors across the state have been dealing with, since we're having to deal with the jail credit on these journal entries. And there's some unpublished case law out there that is binding to district courts on this issue. To put it clearly, it seems like a straightforward issue. We have a special rule that says that if you're on post-release supervision at the time you commit a new felony offense, then the new felony offense must run consecutive to the case that you're on post-release form. It seems very clear. And so when someone's on post-release supervision and they commit a new offense, you would think that, you know, the piece should be clear on the jail credit. Well, where it gets messy, Michelle, thank you, Michelle, from KDOC. Where it gets messy is if they are on post-release and they're booked in on a new offense. They, and it's usually a higher level of offense. And they're sitting in jail for a long period of time. They're no longer serving their post-release time. And they're in jail getting credit. They cannot go back and get revoked on the post-release until they're done with the new case. So the time they're sitting in jail, the court has said, and the Brown case is pretty clear on it, that jail credit has to be awarded. And it's generally meaning to be awarded on the new case. But what happens while they're sitting in jail on the new case, and they get credit for that, is that they run out of time on their post-release, and there's no provision to toll that post-release. So they're essentially what I like to call double difference, meaning they get to run out their post-release without serving post-release. And they get credit for all that because they can't go back and get it revoked. And then they're getting jail credit on their new case. And so what KDOC recommended in '18 was the proposal that you have before you, which is essentially allowing post-releases to be told. They're not serving it.
Yeah.
So if it's told, then at least when they get back to the system on the new case, the jail credit's going on the new case, then DOC can address the post-release on the old case, and they're not getting credit for both cases at the same time, which is really up serving the purpose of the special rule. And I might have said that really messy, but it's really just so that we're clear that they're not going to get credit for both. And when we're sitting there and recommending to the court on jail credit, and there's outstanding jail credit, they were on post-release, there's nothing that we can do but award it on the new case, and they've told out on the post-release. So questions, I'm going to probably defer to Michelle, because she has done this, and she actually testified in the Brown case, which I asked for you to look at. Some jurisdictions are trying to put disclaimers on the journal entry to try to address the issue, but that's not a real clear statutory fix as to where it should go. And so I guess, I asked, the secretary asked, and we both think at least it should be clear. I think the KDOC bill that they tried before at least allowed that post-release to be told, which makes sense to me, so that they can address those issues if and when they get back into custody on that KDOC, the new case, I guess. Does that make sense? So, questions?
Just, I don't know, it seems like what I see, because this is my practice. I make mistakes all the time because I want to keep the judge doing business, and I don't want to get played on. When DOC issues warrant, then I give them credit, I don't give them credit on any time that the warrant was served in this court. So I, you two may come on.
Brown says, if they're picked up on the warrants and they're in custody for that time, you can't give them credit on the case they have been revoked on, so you have to give them credit on the new case. And so, yes, theoretically, what you're doing is correct, but that's not technically what the Brown case says and the way that DOC can then award that credit when they come back into custody. So I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying, interpreted by the Court of Appeals.
Can I speak to that? No, I really do have a comment about this, if you'll entertain it.
Okay.
You need to understand that there's 14 of us on the court, and not all of the panels necessarily agree on everything. But the Brown decision that's been circulated here in the materials is one that's out there and cannot be ignored. I have read what is being proposed, and I think it would certainly clarify some points that would lead several of our members to make better decisions on this point. So it's easier to follow. So because there is a concern about this double difference, it's not as black and white as some would say. And whenever it's gray, you're going to get some fuzzy rulings from our court. Now, more than that, I cannot say. But personally, I like what's being proposed here to clarify that.
I was asking Jessica if she could pull up the statute that's referenced, because the proposal here just says that it shall not toll except as provided by 755217. Though we don't count that, and I was hoping to look at that statute.
Judge, if I may ask, Michelle, it's my understanding that the reason the proposal was to toll the time was to allow there to be the provisions of revocation that are in 755217 to be able to kick in, is that correct, Michelle?
So the proposal, as I remember it, was that, basically what Tim was speaking was that if you were being held in county jail for two reasons, for a DFC warrant, or probation, or parole revocation, and for new charges, that that time would go first to the post-release time. And then once they hit that discharge date, the balance would go to the new case. That was the goal, because there's no statutory provision that allows us to stop post-releases unless they have gone. So we have always, we should get to give them that credit, they hit that discharge date, and then the time would go to their new case. And most often, not, I don't know statistically, but a lot of times, you know, the revocation process has begun, they've waived their morse hearing, they've acknowledged that they're going to have a hearing before the prisoner review board. But the revocation doesn't, isn't complete, because there's, a lot of times, it's based on if there's a new connection. And so sometimes it's reversed. But so Tim's proposal was, you know, you're in custody on two different cases, then let's just clean up the DOC side of things, and then as soon as they hit that discharge date, it goes to their bail. It's not an issue when someone is sentenced. So they're in custody for two cases, supervisory revocation and the new case. It's not an issue, as long as they're sentenced before they hit their discharge date. We have a way that we figure time due before they come back. They serve a balance of, you know, time expired, the balance of post-release, plus that midterm. So we have a way to handle it. It's just these where, I mean, we have individuals who are sitting in county jail for a really long time, awaiting disposition. We have individuals who encourage, you know, ask for continuation, because they think once they get to that discharge date, you can really, I think they get to that discharge date that they're going to get credit. So in Brown's case, because we had direction from the court that he not received the credit, the credit went to the new case and should not go to post-release. The board had a special hearing, they undischarged him, and we moved forward with figuring time due, and his dates ended up being the same, because it's just where that credit goes. So.
So is this stopping the time on the post-release? Or is this saying that it's not being awarded on the new case?
This would, this, the proposal, as Tim and I, as I remember, was that, just that, if you were in custody on two cases, and you have on two for two reasons, your post-release time continues to run while you're awaiting disposition on the new charges. And if you hit your discharge date, we discharge you just like we do now. And starting on that day, you begin to receive credit towards your new case.
The Brown case says that because they're not out serving the post-release, they can't get those, that credit for that time. So even though DFC essentially is discharging them, all that time has to go to something. So they're getting informal credit for DFC because they have to discharge them because the time has run. But this says that, no, you can't do that. You have to give all that credit to the new case because they haven't gone back and actually been discharged or revoked from that to be able to have that jail credit. So if you don't toll, if you say it shall not toll, it means even when they're picked up on those provisions, that time is still going to run, so it goes back towards that original credit. So there's a clear date, the discharge date, on when the new jail credit would start. And if that's not what we want to do on the tolling, that's fine, but there is.
There's still, it expands the time on post-release so you can get the conviction, essentially.
No, it tells the court where they award jail credit, whether they award it to the case and they're already on post-release for, or whether they award it to the new case that's to run consecutive to. It just clarifies where that cutoff is on the time.
And DOC is saying that they would like it to go to the.
To current, to their.
Which is how we currently, that's the current operation that we have, which is why we can discharge them. And I want to say that it's not Brown, it was another, when we, and Brown may not have been a person, but there has been an individual where as soon as we withdrew our KDOC hold for parole violation, they bonded that very same day. They were released, and they were out in the community then until they were sentenced. So it allowed them, it was to their benefit, because we could then withdraw our hold, that was the only other thing that was holding them. They were bond eligible, they posted bond, and they were out until they were sentenced again. So that was. So that was another supporting factor. In, in the long run, even though it may not appear that way, it does benefit the individual. And the other observation that we have made is for someone, if we were to stop everything, first, I will be honest, it would be a logistical nightmare to figure out when time started and how much time needed to be added and sections would need to be changed. But the other thing was, if someone, if you, if you were to stop their time, and then they ended up on probation, and they gave that credit to that underlying probation sentence, and they successfully complete probation, they would never get credit for that time potentially. So.
So it is about giving them credit for the time that they're serving, but it's just about where that credit goes. And logistically, I think the credit should go from the discharge date on the new case and prior to the discharge date on the DOC case. And that's what the not tolling that time would do based on the interpretations. And yes, there are three or four different unpublished opinions on this issue. The Brown case was the more straightforward of them, but many of them are very complicated if you would like to read. But something I would like, we are asking, and KDOC is asking, that the sentencing should support so that the courts have clarity on where that jail credit goes. And this time we want to look into a little bit and come back to next month. I'm opposed to that. And this is what's been presented in the past and what DOC has done. I just wanted an opportunity to bring it to the sentencing commission so that I can discuss it and then maybe consider it.
I would request time, just because what we have in front of us just talks about the tolling. I would like to read through the other statute, because the way you're explaining what you're trying to do doesn't make sense with what I'm reading here. And I would like a little bit of time to look at the other statute.
If I may, anybody, I mean, and we can talk sometimes just about how we do things now and what it actually, like the practical application of it when someone comes in, I am more than happy to.
I know how that works. I've worked that before, but. I get it, but. I'm just trying to figure out what.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, absolutely.
Well, let's just put it on the side for now. Okay, I think we're done in the workshop data request before.
And Scott, if you could enable me to do the share screen, I will, I'll go ahead and share that. I am not able to do it yet.